Good evening, welcome to everyone to the August 27th, 2014 meeting of the school committee. Welcome back to everyone. Linda, everyone is here except Mr. Mullis who will be coming shortly, I'm sure. Okay, that's great. I have to take this opportunity to tell you that we are very pleased with how the new superintendent, Ms. Mary Delai, Mrs. Mary Delai, has hit the ground running here. She probably knows more people now than we do in the town. She's made wonderful strides and I would like to introduce her and it's the superintendent's turn.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. It's been a fantastic start to the school year and I really enjoyed getting to meet and greet all of the staff and the students and I think it's been a great opening. I know I have a report later with more specifics on the back to school, but really appreciate the warm welcome that I've received from all of the school community and just thanks to the school committee and to the staff at the Roman House, the leadership team and everyone for all their support over these last few weeks as I've transitioned into the role of superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So then is the end?
Yes. There are, for your consideration tonight, there are ten items on the consent agenda, three sets of minutes, one out-of-state field trip, as well as six warrants.
In order to speed things up a little, I will just read them one time and then have somebody so move in a second and then we'll accept them, if that's okay. So the first items are approval of minutes of June 11th, 2014 regular session, approval of minutes July 29th, 2014 regular session, approval of minutes July 29th, 2014 executive session which can be released, approval of out-of-state field trip to New York City on October 17th, 2014, and then warrants G 14, G 418, G 419, G 400, R 224, R 225, 226, 227, and R 201, and L 43, 44, 46, 47, 48, and L 001. And the last one on this list is warrants carry forward 01. And those are some that we can all vote on. So do we have someone to move those? Yes, Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Oh, Mrs. Burnish.
All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Mullis. That's all right. Our next items would be the warrants where some of us are not able to vote on them. So first warrant number six, payrolls, 618, 618, 72, 716, 738, and 813. All those in favor? Oh, move.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Burns. Okay, all those in favor of the payroll warrants? And those abstaining, five in favor and two abstain, Mrs. Kane and Mrs. Carroll. Thank you. Warrants CB 14. Mrs. Burnish.
I make a motion to approve warrants CB 14.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Rousad. Okay. All right, all those in favor? Food service, sorry.
Oh, I thought it was CB 14.
No, what one am I on?
CB 14.
Oh, seven, sorry, sorry, excuse me, wrong one. Okay. All right, good. Yes, you weren't paying attention, sorry. Six in favor, do we have an abstention? One abstain. Mrs. Burns. All right, here we go. Warrants sped 26, 27, and 28. Okay, Mrs. Rousad?
I make a motion to approve warrants sped 26, sped 27, sped 28.
And do we have a second? Mr. Mullis. Okay, all those in favor? Six in favor abstain, one abstain, Mrs. Burns. And last but not least, warrant FS 001. All those, oh, say, excuse me, Mrs. Burnish.
I make a motion to approve warrant FS 001.
Okay, Mr. Mullis.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Six in favor abstain, one abstain, Mrs. Carroll. Now I feel like we can start, we have that done.
Did you number 10?
We put it in with, I put that in with the first five.
Oh, forgive me, okay.
Because we could all do that one. All right. Now, we have some visitors tonight and so what we'd like to do is we'd like to go off the agenda, if that works for everyone, and we would like to have our two visitors, one from the new superintendent induction program and one from the superintendent evaluation process, and I will let Ms. Delai, Mrs. Delai, present them to you.
Good.
I don't know if they're working together or separately.
I believe that Dr. McGrath is here and she's going to speak to us specifically about the new superintendent induction program. She is the operations director for MAS S and she's actually also my coach for the new superintendent's induction program. And Dorothy Presser is here, it's a separate presentation, she's here from MAS C, she is one of their field staff, and she is here to present to you an overview of the superintendent's evaluation process, and this is specifically as it relates to the new DESE superintendent evaluation process, which I know is new to you, will be new to you this year.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to join us, Dr. McGrath? I think they are going to talk together, I think. On the left we have Dr. Christine McGrath and on the right we have Mrs. Dorothy Presser. Thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate your visit.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for having us. Mrs. Presser and I have been serving as a tag team, visiting with many school committees and the work has been very enjoyable. So thank you, Mrs. Kane, and members of the Wilmington School Committee. I must say it's nice to be back in the neighborhood, having been in Tewksbury for a number of years.
I'm waiting for you to come back after the Thanksgiving game.
I would be sitting on the appropriate side, Mrs. Kane. I have had the wonderful opportunity over the past week to be in this very room and to participate with the superintendent and her leadership team on some of the important work that they're doing in terms of charting the course for your current school year. And it was a true joy to feel the electricity and high degree of energy in the room on Monday as the superintendent and you, Mrs. Kane, provided some very terrific welcome-back remarks. So I congratulate all of you for getting off to a terrific start. The new superintendent's induction program is in its fifth year, so your superintendent will be a member of the, actually, the fifth cohort. We have had about, or will have with the inception of the fifth cohort, about 75 new superintendents participate in our program. The purpose is to provide support for new superintendents. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, the Association of School Committees, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education recognizes that there's been a significant turnover in the rate of superintendents across the Commonwealth and that that can be disruptive to the work of a school system. So we have established this program and the program goals are to help the superintendent to be strategic. We know that superintendents work hard, we want to give them the tools to work smart, to help superintendents develop those important relationships with the school committee, with the leadership of the teachers' association, and with the members of his or her leadership team. We want to help them to manage resources. Our greatest resources, you folks well know, are the personnel. It's the greatest portion of your budget and we want to make sure that those resources are managed so that you are getting the very best for the children who you serve. We want to help the new superintendent to build the capacity of his or her leadership team. Because superintendents can't do the work alone, we have to rely on the members of our team. And last but by no means least, and Mrs. Presser is going to speak to that this evening as it applies to the superintendent's evaluation, to help the superintendent to develop a robust system of supervision and evaluation. We have a new, very ambitious educator evaluation system in the Commonwealth and we want it to be more than just an exercise in compliance, we want it to be an initiative that really supports the hard work that's happening by your teachers on behalf of your children each and every day. How do we do this? Superintendent and I will participate, we have already participated in one, two, and we have six more, content days, full days of training, under the leadership of Carla Bear, former deputy commissioner of education, and Patricia Grenier, a former superintendent of schools. I will be in your district for a minimum of eight hours per month. That work will look like one-on-one meetings with your superintendent, I will periodically attend your school committee meetings, I will attend leadership team meetings, and we have a rubric that we use for observing leadership team meetings where we look at the level of commitment, trust, accountability, and other variables that characterize effective leadership team development. And I will conduct school visitations with the superintendent, modeling the practice that's required in the new superintendent's evaluation tool. The outcome for year one, what you should expect is that your superintendent who has presented the workings of her entry plan, that she will present a report of those entry findings to you, probably at the midpoint of this school year, and following that presentation, she will be presenting you as the year progresses with a theory of action, a strategy for how to take an already very fine school system and to continue to move it forward. So that's, in a nutshell, what the program is about. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we work very, Dorothy and I, work very closely together because we feel the work of the superintendent needs to be complemented by having a strong, effective working relationship with the school committee and with the members of the leadership team. That's the program.
Does anyone have any questions? I have one question.
Sure.
In the past, we have always, in September meetings, received the goals and the strategic plan, and then we've gone over them with the superintendent and basically okayed them. From the timeline that you're saying, we should expect to have this later in the year?
No, and I think Mrs. Presser's presentation will be, we understand that the superintendent and the school committee will arrive on a set of goals that will frame the work that's happening in your district for this year. The report of entry plan findings and the strategy to be developed will be the framework, along with your existing strategic plan, will be the framework for the goals for the next year.
Okay. They have to do a lot to begin. Get to know everybody and then do all of this in addition.
It's a complicated, it's a complex position.
It is.
And we want to support people to do their very best work on your behalf.
That's great, yes. Anything, anyone else? No, I guess the paperwork you had given us previously really helped us to understand what this program is about, and I think, I speak on behalf of the committee, that this was a good choice for them to vote at the time, neither Kathleen nor I could be part of that, but when it was part of negotiations, it was a good, very good choice to vote for this. Because certainly you have many, many years as a superintendent and you can only be helpful to us, and Ms. Delai is a quick learner, I see, so, thank you, Mrs. Burns.
I had a quick question, if you could clarify, because I'm remembering from the earlier retreat we had, that Mrs. Presser spoke at, in looking through the rubrics that is a part of the superintendent evaluation, do we choose specific rubrics to follow in each category or how is that determined?
I don't want to take the wind out of Mrs. Presser's sails.
If I put the cart before the horse, that's my MO, so if you want me to just sit tight, I'd be happy to, no worries then.
You can ask for clarification if I don't.
Thank you, thank you. But part of the work that your superintendent and I will do throughout the year will progress, monitor how she feels she's doing in meeting the benchmarks of the goals that are chosen. That's a substantial part of our work.
Process, okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? No, very good, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Mrs. Presser.
Well, thank you for having me. I am really happy to be back this evening and talk to you a little bit more. I think when I was here last time, we had a lot of really good discussions and I may have given you what I refer to as the speed dating version of the superintendent evaluation, which doesn't really do it justice or help you all that much, but it sort of gave you a little bit of information about it. So tonight we can expand on that a little bit more and help you understand what's going to be coming up in the year ahead. Do you want to take some time to turn around?
Yes, thank you.
So as Dr. McGrath said, we have a new model, I believe you know, for educator evaluation throughout the Commonwealth and superintendents are included in that. It's in place for all educators and it was part of the achievement gap legislation a couple of years ago. All districts are required to implement it by this year. There are some prescribed elements to the program and that there are some areas, and we'll talk about these as we go along, that are, you are able to make some choices and some adaptations if you choose. So we're doing it as part of the achievement gap legislation. Part of the rationale is to make educator evaluation more effective, to actually help educators develop and grow as opposed to being just a dog and pony show, quick visit, but really to help educators grow as educators and help our kids grow as learners. It links multiple criteria to the measures for educator success rather than just the sort of observation model that many things, that many evaluation tools followed previously. And I think, to me, one of the values of it is that, as you'll see going through it, it really lends the evaluation tool to being much more objective and much less subjective, which I think helps everybody in helping the district grow and in helping serve our students better. So as I said, it's a strategy for improving professional practice and it ties evaluations, the evaluation to student outcomes. And then, as I said, there are certain parts that are required and others that are flexible. So annual evaluations are required, there's a standard format, and there are some places where you can adapt the tool for your district, we'll talk about those in a bit. It is a new tool, it requires, it's not intuitive by any means, it requires sort of getting your head around it, and it's very different from the tools that we've had before where you sort of, you might look at it at the beginning of the year, set some goals and say, yes, this is the tool I want to use, and you really don't look at it that much till the end of the year. This is really a year-round, constant process of monitoring the progress towards the evaluation and working together to achieve the goals that are determined in the evaluation. So there's three components to the model, and I'll go through each component separately and hopefully at the end you'll feel like you have some sense of what the tool and the model contains and can approach it with confidence. So the first, the first part is, the first component is a five-step cycle, which both starts and ends with a self-assessment. In the case of a new superintendent, the self-assessment and the entry findings are sort of, go hand-in-hand or could be considered equivalent. From the entry findings, there'll be a lot of analysis done, looking at the different components that are already in place in the district, determining what is needed in the district and the goals that should be set. So the goal setting and the planning come out of the assessment and the analysis. Once the goals are set, the plan is implemented. And then in the mid-year, you'll do a formative assessment. The formative assessment is just a discussion, it's not a written assessment. It's an opportunity to look at the goals that have been set and determine the progress toward the goals and discuss if any adjustments are needed and/or if the expectations are being met as you go along. But really, throughout the year, you will be monitoring progress. It's just, the formative assessment is just kind of to take a breather, take a look and see how everyone thinks you're doing, a little bit more formally and directly. And then at the end of the year, you'll do the summative evaluation, which will include as part of the documentation, you look at the self-assessment, which will also inform how you're thinking about the next set of goals for the year ahead. So it is really a continuous cycle throughout the year and throughout every year. So that's the cycle, that's, and now we'll talk about the evaluation tool itself. There are two parts to the tool, and the first part is goals. You will, and the goals are supposed to be SMART. You probably know the SMART acronym, Specific and Strategic, Measurable, Action-Oriented, Rigorous, Realistic, and Results-Focused, Timed and Tracked. And SMART goals also have key actions and benchmarks, so it's very clear what is going to be accomplished and when it should be accomplished if the benchmarks are met. In the superintendent's evaluation, there are several goal areas, a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and two district improvement goals that should be laid out for the superintendent. So you'll set four goals, one is a professional practice goal. For new superintendents in the induction program, that professional practice goal is participation in the new superintendent induction program. Professional practice is how can this educator grow as an educator? And then student learning goals and district improvement goals, district improvement goals often are, if you look at them, you can't really tell, is this a student learning goal or is it a district improvement goal? Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. But that is something that will be determined as you all look at what your district needs are for the coming year. So there are goals. The second part of the tool is the standards and indicators of professional practice, that's the rubric that Mrs. Barnes was referring to. There are four standards. The standards are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. The superintendent needs to be evaluated on each one of those standards. So the way you're going to think about it, and the rubric has 65 elements, the standards are broken down into indicators, the indicators are broken down into elements. So there's a total of 65 elements in that rubric of professional practice. When you set the goals, you will then look at the rubric and determine which of those 65, a limited number in the range of maybe eight to 12, that you will pick out that relate to the goals. Do not rate the superintendent on all 65 indicators and elements because everyone will be crazy by the end. And it all requires that the superintendent provide evidence of accomplishment. So if you want her to be doing her work and not just reporting on what she's trying to do, you need to make sure that you're sort of keeping that limited and targeted. The way to think about the two parts of the evaluation tool, the tool, the goals, and then the standards, is the goals are what you want to accomplish, the standards and the elements that you pick are going to determine the quality to which those goals are accomplished. So the goals are the what and the standards are the how, well. Does that make sense to everybody? So as I said, the standards are broken down into indicators, the indicators are broken down into elements, and for each element, there's a descriptor of what good, what the practice looks like at each performance level. The performance levels of exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. In the case of a new superintendent, needs improvement is developing. You take out the term needs improvement and put the term developing to make it clear that in the first few years of their job, the superintendent is still growing into their job. So needs improvement can have sort of a negative connotation, really what you want to be able to say is you can see progress towards proficiency, but they're not quite there yet, if that's a descriptor that you feel is appropriate. So we talked about the cycle, we talked about the two components, now we'll talk about the rating system. The rating system requires that you have a summative performance rating on the goals, and those are the different categories, a summative rating on the standards, each of the four, or take each of the four standards and then there's one summative rating for all the standards, and then an overall summative rating. So you can see in the goal categories go from do not meet up to exceeded, the standards go from exemplary down to unsatisfactory, and the overall summative rating has the same ratings. There will be coming in the future an impact on student learning, that's just, put that aside for the moment, we don't have to worry about that quite yet, but just, at some point that will pop up. So again, the key components are the five-part evaluation cycle, the two-part tool, and then the multi-part rating system. So just, if, I think if you can sort of keep those components in your head, it kind of helps you get your head around the evaluation model. So sort of understanding the model, how does it get implemented? How does it all work when the rubber hits the road? First of all, you'll be creating the evaluation document, and to create the document, to set the goals, you'll be relying on information that already exists in the district, your mission and vision statement, your strategic plan, district improvement plans that will be developed in the future that you don't have right now, school improvement plans that outline what might be necessary, the entry plan that is, that Ms. Delai is working on right now. So given, taking those documents and determining what the goals will be, the school committee and the superintendent will work together on establishing the goals. Usually the superintendent will recommend what she believes are the appropriate goals. The final decision rests with the evaluator, which is the school committee. So whatever goals are decided upon, the school committee will actually vote and say, these are the goals. So you'll work with the superintendent to draft the goals. We suggest actually using a subcommittee to begin that work, just because I sort of equate it to laws and sausages, you know, the two things that you don't really want to see worked on over a long period of time in public. It just, it streamlines the work, but the subcommittee comes back to the committee and it is definitely the full school committee that has final approval on the goals. Then after the goals have been set, you will work with the superintendent to identify the standards, indicators, and elements, also approved, voted on by the school committee. And just a reminder, even though you're going to pick a limited number of elements, all the standards must be represented in the elements that you pick. And then you can also decide to weight the standards. If you remember, they were instructional leadership, family and community engagement, help me.
Professional culture and management and operations.
Okay, thank you. So if, if looking at your district, looking at the work that needs to be done, you decide, for example, that instructional leadership is of primary importance, instead of weighting each standard at 25% for the four of them, you could decide one got rated, weighted more highly in the final evaluation. You also, we really suggest, and this is really important, that once the goals have been decided and once the standards have been decided, that you talk with the superintendent about what are the artifacts of evidence, what evidence are you going to show us that shows that these goals have been met? And the part of the rationale for doing that is so that, to the best extent possible, everyone is looking at the goals through the, at the evaluation through the same lens, that you don't get to the end of the year and people had different expectations about what they were going to see for evidence or how the goal was going to play out. The other reason for doing that is it helps you build a year-long agenda. A lot of times you can look at the key actions and benchmarks, the evidence that will show that those benchmarks or those actions have happened, and those will be presentations throughout the year at your school committee meetings. So instead of getting a whole compendium of evidence right at the end of the year, the superintendent may be able to point and say, I gave you this evidence at this meeting, it was this report, and so forth. So you'll have that, you'll have a better understanding throughout the year of how that evidence is rolling out. So just to talk a little bit about what is required in the tool and what is optional, we already talked about the four SMART goals and three areas are required, the rating on the four standards is required, and the summary rating is required. I can't emphasize this enough, you do not need to use all the elements and indicators, pick ones that really relate to the goals that you Pick ones that really relate to the goals that you've set. We talked about weighting the standards differently. You can also pick the timing of the evaluation cycle. Different districts have different rationale behind the timing that they pick. It may be related to the school year. It may be related to the fiscal year. It may be related to elections. But you can decide, when are we going to have the best information? When makes the best sense for us to do this? Is it July 1st to June 31st, January 1st to December 31st, September 1st to August? That is a local decision. And then you can decide how the evaluation is used in terms of contract negotiations, compensation, or whatever. And also, the process for completing the evaluation is something that you, as a committee, can decide. I'm going to get ahead of myself. You know, whether or not the chair has the responsibility or a subcommittee has the responsibility for compiling a composite evaluation, that type of thing can be decided locally. So just to give you a brief example of something that might be a student learning goal that would fit the SMART goal standards, I guess. A goal that says pretty specifically what the superintendent will do. Lead and support district administrators in an effort to reduce proficiency gaps. Tells how the goal will be measured. The grade level median mathematics MCAS scores and what will happen. So, and then you can see below the different elements from the rubric that were picked to support that particular goal. And then a list of the evidence that will be presented to show progress towards that particular goal. So that's just, I mean, I know that's a lot of words. It's just sort of to show you that, how the goals might appear. So we talked a little bit about this already in how the evaluation would roll out at the end of the year. Committee members would complete their individual evaluations the way you've always done it, using the superintendent's self-assessment, the portfolio of evidence that's been presented. And then you'll, there's a form provided by the state to complete the evaluation. Then, as we said, the composite evaluation can be prepared by the chair or designee of the chair or by a subcommittee. But in the end, just as in the past, it is devoted, it is discussed and voted on by the full committee at a public meeting. So just to review the cycle, I'll just put that up as a little end slide there. And if this wasn't enough, there is on the MAS C website a webinar that walks you through this process using a fictional district and to show their documents and how they implemented the tool. Any questions?
Are we still going to stay on the school committee?
You know, let me, let me sort of address that. I mean, obviously, districts have done this, have been doing this. And everyone has kind of struggled with it the first time and everyone has felt more comfortable and gotten better the second time. So we're all in a learning mode with this. It's not, it may not be perfect the first time around. It probably won't be, but you'll get, it'll get easier and you'll get better.
I do have one question. I know on the teacher evaluation, the exemplary is basically, you're told not to use that. Is that same on the superintendent's evaluation?
Well, I mean, it's the same verbiage from, you know, proficient is a very high standard. And if you look at, if you look at the rubric, pretty much exemplary for is that, whatever the indicator is or the element is, it can be that they can model. That not only do they do it, but they can be a model for others to do it.
But I think in the teacher one, wasn't there some, was there a compensation attached to that? If they had exemplary or too many exemplars? Or did I misread that?
I have to say, I know the superintendent model very well. I'm not as well-versed in the teacher one.
But in the superintendent one would, in a sense, it would be, there would be monetary reaction to that.
That's a local decision.
Just to answer your question in two ways, Mrs. Kane, I think there were some local options exercised with respect to the use of the exemplary rating with teachers. I think for folks, as they were implementing this very complicated process, there was some agreement by locals as they negotiated the terms of the pilot or the field test or the first year of implementation that proficiency, proficient would be what they were striving for. That certainly wasn't a directive from the state, nor exemplary is alive and well within the rubric. There is, however, as you mentioned, an element within the teacher evaluation system whereby somebody can achieve, if somebody has a certain number of exemplaries, they receive a certain distinction, which again, local option, your prerogative as a school committee may provide those individuals with additional compensation and an additional distinction. It's, you know, I want to say master teacher, but that's not the term. So somebody who is recognized by their peers might be serving as a mentor by virtue of the performance rating that they received.
Thank you. Does anyone else, anyone have any questions?
I had a quick question. In one of your slides, it mentions that annual evaluations are required in most cases. What are the circumstances in which they wouldn't be?
An experienced superintendent, you can follow a two-year cycle so that annually, you would have the, in the, you would have a formative evaluation in the mid, you would still have the formative evaluation, but it would be at the end of one year as opposed to the end of six months.
Good. Thank you.
Were you all set? Yep. So you're ready to roll?
You know, I would encourage you to maybe just think about it in the following terms. And, you know, it's fresh in my mind because driving here, when you enter this complex, you see the doors to this beautiful building that are going to open in February. So if you think about the management and operations section, a piece of the management and operations section addresses the management of your physical plant. And as Mrs. Presser lines out the steps in the process, I think about if I were going to open the doors to a new high school, your flagship, at the middle of the school year, that's going to be an ambitious undertaking for all involved. So that might be a way, something that you know is going to happen, you know is important to you and to the community that you serve. Maybe you apply, you think about that. You practice what Mrs. Presser has described tonight, thinking about the opening of the new school and what a goal for that might look like. But that being said, it's, that's your work, not our work. I would just give that as an example.
Thank you. That's a good one. Mrs. Barnes?
When would, would a subcommittee, I think a subcommittee is kind of the way to go with that. Would that be something that?
What I would do is, because I think this is a lot to take in. If you agree, what I would do is see if we are all in consensus that we'd go the subcommittee route, which I think we all are. And I would have you think about it as to, that you can give the time because it is a time commitment, that subcommittee, and see who would like to give the time to be part of that or is able to, I shouldn't say that. We'd all like to, but we can't all have that time necessarily. And then next, September 10th at our next meeting, then I'll appoint that subcommittee. Have you let me know between now and September 10th if that's what you'd be wanting to do. So there could be three people on the subcommittee.
Three or more, or just?
No, it can only be three because four would be a quorum. So it would be a three-person subcommittee. But does that sound okay to everybody?
I think it makes sense, though, as well. As with any questions that may develop in building this piece, maybe easier to have a smaller group work with, you know, MAS C and, you know.
We're going to have Mrs. Press's number on speed dial. We'll let you know when we meet so you can be home waiting.
You know, I'm going to sit with a couple of subcommittees.
Oh, so you do do that, you do that. Okay. We'll take you up on it, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was in a meeting on Monday night where I just thought the committee did a fantastic job working through the process. And it was very interesting. And they, the chair relied on the work of a subcommittee. Each member had completed their personal evaluation, submitted it to the school, to the subcommittee. The subcommittee prepared the composite document. That was the public document that ultimately all members of the committee signed. The chair read the composite. But following the presentation of the composite eval, opened it up to the floor so that each member of the school committee, if they felt that there were other points that may not have been reflected in the composite, they had the opportunity to offer a comment in that regard. And I thought the process worked very nicely.
Right. Great. Thank you. That sounds good. We're all smiling still, so it's okay. As long as Mrs. Delai is smiling too.
Fantastic. Yes.
All right. Sounds good. Well, we really thank you for your time. Thank you for coming. And we will get ourselves started in the next couple of weeks. Make the appointment and, for the 10th and hopefully be prepared to meet that week or the very next week, yeah.
Just to offer a timeframe, just so you're aware and you probably, I know you've been through the educator evaluation cycle for our educators and administrators last year, so you've been through one year. And the timetable, just so you have a sense of when our principals and teachers will be going through this process, which is very similar for administrators and educators, that process calls for them to be developing goals during the October timeframe. Is that correct, Dr. Byrne? By October. And the educator plans are completed by, by the end of October. Certainly, I think it will be helpful for them to have some sense of district goals, obviously, prior to that process. So I think, just to give you a context for when they'll be thinking through this entire process as well. So maybe that, you know, the committee, the subcommittee, based on its schedule and its ability to meet, might want to think about a timeline that would have us there in, say, early October timeframe.
All right. So that's another thing to see if you're able to do that. I have another question. Does the superintendent participate when we're on the subcommittee?
Absolutely. 100%. Yes.
During the whole, the whole time?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Okay.
Teamwork.
Teamwork. Sounds excellent. That's good. Then we might not have to call you as often. We'll have you. That'd be great. Thank you so much. This was really helpful, very, very helpful. And when you come back again, we'll let you know where our progress is.
Sounds great.
Be good. Thank you. All right. Yes, you can introduce them.
So I'd like to take a moment and introduce you to our next presenter. And I think you're very familiar with him. I had an opportunity to meet with him a couple of times so far and I'm just very, so impressed with the passion that he brings to this particular cause. And that's Paul Cardello, who is with iPods for Wounded Veterans. And he would like to give you a little bit of update on their work and share some really great news with us about his program.
Welcome, Mr. Cardello.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Cardello. I'm the chairman of iPods Wounded Veterans. I'm a resident of Wilmington for 39 years. And I meet Peggy Kane on the soccer field. So Peggy gets all the new updated news about iPods. But I want to welcome new superintendent, Mary Delai. Mary has been gracious enough to have meetings with me and Robert Regan, who explained to, about the program that has been taken to another level by a former superintendent, Joanne Benton. And Mary's going to carry the torch, hopefully, with Principal Linda Peters. And we have a couple of big announcements. That's the main reason why I'm here. As you can see on this post, we have Navy SEAL Tom Shea. He'll be coming to Wilmington High School on Friday, November 7th, with his wife Stacy Shea to speak to seniors at Wilmington. At 9:00 in the morning, I believe, Mary, that's the schedule?
Yes, I think we're looking at first or second period. Yes.
Right. And he's going to be in Wilmington on Thursday night doing two TV shows at WCTV. It's part two for the people who are on vacation and missed the first one, part one. And I got like 15 phone calls asking if he was coming back. And he is coming back. He'll be on from 6:45 to 7:45. And then Stacy Shea will be on from 8:00 to 9:00. If you've read this book, you know that Stacy Shea is a real big part of this book. And there'll be military wives that'll be coming to Wilmington from Hamscom Field, who have about 24 seats. Anybody a member from the school committee is invited. I know most of you, I think, are going to Cape or you had commitments there. But also, we have two book fairs on Veterans Day weekend. We're opening up a Dear Soldier program in New Hampshire. And that night, from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock, he's at Barnes &amp; Noble up in Salem, New Hampshire. And the following day, from 12:00 to 2:30, he's at Barnes &amp; Noble in Burlington, across from the Burlington Mall. So he's, he has two TV shows Thursday. He's at Wilmington High School on Friday. At 11:30, he's at a luncheon at Bose Corporation in Framingham. And at 6:00 to 9:00, he's at Salem, New Hampshire Barnes &amp; Noble. Saturday, he's at Barnes &amp; Noble from 12:00 to 2:30. And there may be a corporate sponsorship dinner Saturday night. So I never thought he would ever come back, no matter get him once, but twice. It's something, you know, this community made an impression on him, to say the least. And of course, the people were on vacation and I got like 15 phone calls asking if he was going to come back. But I think the big part this time is Stacy Shea. And get her perspective of raising three children, keeping on the home front and maintaining his attitude that he wasn't going to die in Afghanistan. He was going to come back to her. I know Mary changed her schedule. She wanted to go there. You know, she, actually, she left the questioning at the studio. And Peggy Kane was there and MJ Burton, Mary, you know, we met just occasionally at the Mullers Park lot. It says, oh, you want to come and see a Navy SEAL? And she looked at me, what? And that's how this all started. And I says, well, he said he's coming to Wilmington. And he did come. So mainly, I'm here tonight to make this major announcement that a former superintendent, Joanne Benton, has been working behind the scenes here that really nobody really. She had enough problems getting a high school being built on time, on budget for February. But her legacy is left with iPods Wounded Veterans, the Dear Soldier program. We had a premier program in this, our program. We had 1,200 school letters from the school system of Wilmington, 800 from Tuckford. So that's 2,000 letters from two towns. We have established the Dear Soldier Bose Awards that will be presented at Woods Bank in 2015. The two top letters from anyone at Wilmington High School will receive electronic equipment from the Bose Corporation. And I'm sure everyone knows the kind of equipment Bose produces. So they looked over Wilmington school system. They saw two students were picked for student of the year. And Joanne, I don't know what she did, but we have a three-year commitment for this award to happen. And she really, we made a presentation of Bose. We thought it would be a trial period, but she got three years from the higher ups at Bose Corporation. So I've told... So I told Mary about it, but we wanted to get it on public record that this is gonna happen for, you know, the Wilmington High School. So, and then Tom Shea and Stacy Shea said, "Well, we wanna come to Wilmington High School and talk to the seniors." So they are coming November 7th at 9:00 at Wilmington High School. I don't know if Wilmington High School ever had a Navy SEAL yet to talk to the students. I think this might be the first time. So that is happening. And then we have the Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair on Saturday at Burlington. We're there all weekend from 9:00 to 5:00, but Tom Shea will be signing books. And he'll be up in, like I said, up in Salem, New Hampshire. But I just wanna, this is his book. If you don't have it, try to get it. I highly recommend it. It's Unbreakable, A Navy SEAL's Way of Life. And it's a story about a warrior and a Spartan's wife. It's actually, you know, it looks like it's, it is a military story, but it's a love story too. And he's kind of impressed at what we're doing here. He went and investigated the school system. He has a lot of contacts and, you know, called Washington, what we've been doing. And we'll be making our 11th trip, first week in October, and our 12th trip in December. We have been picked on October 9th through the 12th as the official charity of the Team Spanish Caucus of Florida. And we have to go to Orlando, Florida to receive the award. But we've been contacted by the military and there happens to be three hospitals in the Orlando-Tampa area for the East Coast, in patient care, outpatient care, and long-term care. And currently, there's 250 injured veterans there. We have injured veterans from New Hampshire, but none from Massachusetts. So basically, the first two weeks in October, we're gonna see 400 injured veterans, which is unfortunate, but that's the situation we're in. And, you know, we started with it three and a half years ago with an idea that we never thought we would have, be here where we are today with 288 sponsors across the United States of America. So going beyond this is that Stacy Shea took it upon herself to start Dear Soldier in South Carolina, effective September 2nd of next week. And, you know, and they asked me, you know, who's the model program? I says Wilmington. So we had to send her a package. So it goes back to what, you know, Christian Tarza from the Ruben Street School and that second grade class, drawing them little letters with the stars on them, the first class that did it, the first 23 kids, to now that we have everybody in the school system writing letters. Plus, we have the senior center making bracelets. We have the family medical center conducting classes, telling them how to make the bracelets. You know, we have WCTV involved. The whole town has been galvanized by, you know, by the mission. But it's just, it's amazing how this community just took it upon themselves and everybody galvanized towards the injured servicemen and women. And we've been, you know, we've been highly recognized, you know, up and down the East Coast. And tomorrow, from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock, I am on WEI Sports Radio on the Dennis and Callahan Show, being sponsored by Serene Hall Insurance out of Handover. You know, they're gonna, we're gonna talk about the Dear Soldier program. They have already, kind of like, given me a pre-prep, what's gonna happen. So we'll be on for a little bit and going in there to see them. So, you know, constantly fundraising. We still have a raffle going on here. It's coming September 2nd on the Viking Cruise. If anybody still wants to be involved in that, it's $50. If you get the 200 tickets, all you do is pack your bag, 'cause the airfare is going with us. So we're trying to make that major push. That's mainly why we're on the radio tomorrow. But basically, the whole town has been galvanized by this and, you know, I can't tell, I can't thank, I have to mention, I mentioned Christian Tarza, Dawn Martel here at Wilmington High School from the Wilmington Local Heroes Club, who comes up with these unbelievable creative ideas. And, you know, her son's in the Air Force, you know, he's going through training to be, I believe, a pilot. But she, every year, she comes up with something different. Last year, with snowflakes to hang from the ceiling with sayings on them. So they hung them up at Traumatic Brain Injury Unit at Fort Belville Community Hospital down in Virginia. And now she's come up with sayings on a little American flag, has a yellow ribbon around it, and there's a special saying on it. And the students sign it from Wilmington High. And they give them out to all the soldiers when they get their electronics. So she, you know, New Year, she'll come up with something different this year. I know her. You know, she's, and I know what she's saying. But I want to read this. This is about our first recipient of the Bose Award. This is from a 2014 Wilmington High graduate. It's Erin Hurley, if everybody can see that. And, and just let me read this to you. "Thank you so much for choosing my letter as a letter of the, at Wilmington High School. Also, thank you for the wonderful gifts you have given me, especially the headphones. They were very useful to me while I'm studying at college next year. I appreciate what the soldiers do for us in that you have selected my letter. Thank you again sincerely, Erin Hurley." So she's number one. So now, they upped it to two letters per year to receive electronics from the Bose Corporation, which is, it's pretty unusual, 'cause they get tons of people asking them for donations and all kinds of things. And I wasn't in the meeting with Joanne. I don't know how she did it. So I'm just telling what I know. So I'm sure Mary will be getting phone calls from the tower, as we call it, from Bose, with some executives doing that. But I want to close on this. We had a very serious injury veteran. And I really want to read this to you. He came up from Fritschburg. And he is 100% disabled, you know, and I just want to close on this. And it was published in the town choir. Veterans still suffer long after leaving the war behind. On the evening of Tuesday, August 5th, Paul Cardello met with an Army veteran who was seriously injured in Iraq 10 years ago. He said he served there at the time when there was a lot of burning trash or barrels of waste was taken by place. He has suffered lung and brain damage along with PTSD and other disorders from the time in Iraq. During his meeting with Paul, he took some time to write this letter. "I would like to take this time to thank iPods Wounded Veterans for not forgetting the soldiers. I have been home from Iraq in 10 years and I'm still struggling, having nightmares and anxiety. It's like the world is still turning. People have moved on and I am stuck and left behind. It's nice to know that are polite and support us. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, 110 Maintenance Division Staff Sergeant Silver." So that's one of them. But unfortunately, we talked about the waste and the burning barrels. Some of the barrels had nuclear waste in them. And he's been notified that 12 members of his platoon have pancreatic cancer. So now he's being tested for that. But he did not know he was eligible to get electronics. And it's like these veterans that we have missed since we come in the first nine years of the war, that we're searching out to try to find them. And, and that's what iPods Wounded Veterans is about. See if we can help their rehabilitation process a little better. And that's only one of them. I have a stack of about 15 or 20 more. But I just can't thank all the people in Wilmington who have been donating, you know, and my board of directors. We have 52 volunteers now and no one takes a salary. So it goes back, 80% of the money goes to the veterans, 20% is on media relations. And we don't fly to Washington. We're driving vans, so we can, saving that. So Joanne Benton's legacy is that she was the brains behind the book fairs. They put me in a position, you can do a book fair, which I had no conception how to do. So who would I go for advice? I went to Joanne Benton. She ran 15 book fairs. Okay, let's see what the Joanne Benton plan is. And she went in, described the plan. First shot out, we break the record. $9,000 in online sales, $6,000 in in-store sales. So we wound up getting $3,000 out of Barnes &amp; Noble, which in turn, we bought E-readers and tablets. So I says, "Well, Joanne, now you did such a good job. They want us to do Memorial Day." "That's okay, Paul. We're gonna, we got a different plan this time." So we did another one. And she breaks the record again. We do $11,000 in onsite sales and $6,000 in-store sales. And we wound up getting $17,000, which in turn gave us 22 random high-definition tablets, which are made by Samsung now. So Barnes &amp; Noble just called me this past weekend saying they cost $379. If you get them here by Saturday, you'll get them for $179. So that's how we got 22 tablets. And they're only, and they're a tablet plus the E-reader. It's one whole thing now. They gave us $200 on apps alone on each tablet. So that's, you know, the effect of the book fair, as you can see. But now we have a Navy SEAL who's gonna be sitting next to the kids who are writing letters. He's gonna be signing books. And I, we believe, you know, Burlington believes it's gonna be the biggest book fair in the history of the store. And that, you know, that's where I, but if you have a chance, go to TV studio and meet Tom and Stacy Shea. Please have a chance. If you can't make it, try to go down to Barnes &amp; Noble. Try to meet them. They're like unbelievable people and they've picked up the cause here. So finally, I want to end on this. Stacy Shea said, "I'm not doing enough." So in October, they're gonna have a woman 6K Road Race with an official charity they're running. Well, I'd like to close on this, you know, 'cause Mary, Peggy was there, and MJ. Why don't we get your thoughts about that night? 'Cause I really haven't talked to you since that night. Why don't we start with MJ?
I have to say, I was very, I read the book to get some insight and I'm blown away just, I think solely about the, when they went out in the field and shooting at the targets and... It's just that whole encompass, you know, I can't ever say, and I can't even come close to say that I can even gather what he's gone through in the six-month mission that he and his SEAL team went out to Afghanistan. But it gives me, it made quite an impression. And what Mr. Cardello didn't say was, this book was initially written, Mr. Shea's wife asked him to write it as a direction or as a...
As a memoir to his kids.
A memoir to his kids that if he didn't come back from his last tour, that his kids would not only know him through the stories told by family members and his wife, but that he would leave a written legacy. And he left challenges for each of his children to do at certain points in their lives. And so just to think that this came out of a "if I don't return" type of thing. But it, as Mr. Cardello did state, it also, a lot of who he is and where his passion is, is completely and absolutely supported by his wife and she is the foundation of which he stands, you know, steps off of. And this Spartan wife, we had about a five, six-minute discussion about how upset he was because the publisher, he wanted the book to be titled Spartan Wife. And they're like, "No, no, no, no. We're gonna title it Unbreakable." He's like, "But I wanted it about my wife, you know, Spartan wife, 'cause I think that's component." And I'm like, "Yeah, but I can understand it. You can." He goes, "I would rather have seen it as Spartan Wife." And I'm like, "Okay, that's okay." But he's a very impressive man and the intensity, well, you know, me, not to be surprised, but I, you know, I could talk to him for hours just to get his perspective on certain things. So I very much enjoyed it. And I, I, you know, is the Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair, is it happening that Saturday that they're up here? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The following day from 12:00 to 2:30.
Yeah. Because I very much, just meeting him.
Yeah.
I very much would have liked to met Stacy Shea as well, because, just to see how they balance each other.
Is it the Saturday before or the Saturday, like, November 8th?
November 8th.
Perfect. We'll be back.
All right. Let's hear Mary's thoughts.
I did not have the opportunity to actually read the book because somehow this job put so many things on my plate to read that I didn't get the opportunity. I did download it to my Kindle, so it's in my future. But I thought that the event itself was very moving and it was really nice to see it being so well-attended. And I think for me personally, some of the things that he said were really helpful in terms of how to be a more effective leader. And he shared some insights with us on that that I found to be very compelling. Thank you for making us aware of the opportunity.
Well, Peggy, yeah, you know, this is a...
Always go last. And, you know, I was really thankful to MJ because MJ, one day, there's the book on my doorstep there. MJ came along with the book. She said, "I want to make sure you got the book." So I did read it. As I was reading it, I was so nervous to be in the room with him. I felt like he was, my family thought it was hysterical. I'm like, "I don't know about this." Because he was, it was so impressive. It was so overwhelming. And I thought, "Oh, my goodness." But when we first went into WCTV, he was over to the, one of the rooms to the left and talking to people. And then someone, I said, "Oh, isn't he gonna get here?" And they went, "No, that's him over there." What? Very handsome man in a blue suit with, he just walked like, once you saw him, then you knew he definitely had been a serviceman. And once he started talking, he was so humble. He wasn't a rough and gruff type of person at all. He did not want to talk about himself, I felt. He had been into the State House with Jim Misselli in the afternoon and yourself and the other men that were with you. And I thought, one thing that was interesting was, he's just there for a day, but there's a camaraderie about people who've been in the service. Because you and the other fellows who were there
Right.
were definitely, you could see there was already a connection between them, making jokes and talking to each other and everything. And then one of them brought his father from, was he World War II?
Yeah. Yeah.
Who was in his 90s.
He was 90, 90s. He was a World War II pilot.
Pilot. And he was so, this man, what was the man's name that brought him?
Alden A. Fox.
He was so proud of his dad. It was wonderful to see that. And my husband had been in the service and I felt really that he would have been thrilled to go to something like that. He would have been very proud. And he made you feel proud that we have such people who would be willing to do this. And he really did not see his kids growing up for a while.
Yeah.
He had a hard time. But they would Skype. I thought, "That's interesting, too." But he had a lot to say about his wife and everything. But he definitely was a humble person and I think it would be great if you saw him. And the book, I couldn't put it down. Once I started it, I really could not put it down. And that wasn't an interest of mine, so I was really pleased with the book. And thank you, Mr. Cardello, because really, this is all because of you.
Absolutely.
You do such a great job.
I'm just a PR person, really, but, you know, I have 52 volunteers. I have 52 volunteers. I keep saying that, that from all professional walks of life. From finances to the top guys on Wall Street, down to the custodians in Wilmington. So it's a, it's a team effort. There's no way this could be pulled off because the two organizations involved, out of Team SIS and the VFW, they merged to create iPods Wounded Veterans. 'Cause that's how big, you know, how many injured soldiers there are. I especially want to thank Jim Misselli, a state representative. You know, he's the one, he's like, I'm the chairman, but he's Frank Sinatra. He's the chairman of the board here. But without him getting our Class A security plans, we could never be going to the hospitals. But just in closing, what happened at the State House. Mr. Misselli read his resume, Tom Shea's resume. He got a three-minute standing ovation. He got a three-minute standing ovation at the State House, including the balcony. And the aides came running over to me and said, that doesn't happen. And naturally, after he spoke, there was twelve or thirteen politicians wanting to get the pictures with him from all over the state. But, you know, we have, we have a lot of people, you know, like Terry Marsella with the senior, with the seniors, DeBose, Senior Center. You know, we have a lot of people involved behind the scenes. You know, Chuck and Matt DiPascual at Rocco's Restaurant. Our job's been up there for three and a half years, have never taken down. They buy all the iTunes cards. That's what they're known in Washington for. Rocco's Restaurant buys all the iTunes cards for the injured troops. You know, and I, when I go back for it, we had an idea. I remember we were at the Knights of Columbus, and Steve was doing a comedy show. And I said, Steve, I'm going to the hospitals, but we only have like thirty electronics. You know, I don't know what's gonna happen there. I remember that's three and a half years ago. And now I'm making my eleventh to twelfth trip, so. And me, a resident of Washington, it's my second home, I believe. But in closing, we've been selected as one of the few groups to go to Washington this Veterans Day, November eleventh. They built a multi-million dollar project from the Park Street Church, privately funded. It's called a Dude Ranch, it's called Freedom Land. It's handicap accessible for all amputees, brain injury people, and it's completely handicap accessible. All five military branches are gonna be there, and we've been invited as one of the select groups. So now it looks like I'm going to Washington three times in three months. Somebody has to represent iPods. I think I wanna take Peggy. Have a thirteen-hour ride in a van. I mean, it, I can't believe, you know, we've been selected. But we have a lot of credibility in Washington. It's all, in closing. But mainly, it's, you know, it's about this town galvanizing on the mission. If I know what the mission is, you know, they're getting it done. You know, this is, this is our mission. People ask me all the time, you know, why is it this town? I says, well, they saw a need here, and they, you know, the business community, the school system, the senior center, Family Medical Center got involved. We have the therapists going in December to see the injured troop from the Family Medical Center. This is their third time. 'Cause they, you know, they, that's what they do, and they know, they know about it. But it's just a pleasure to live in a town like this. You know, to be a resident for thirty-nine years, you know, and have two teachers be Teachers of the Year, Chris Frye, and the Wilmington Middle School being the top middle school of all thirty-six schools, and Chris Frye being picked last year as the Teacher of the Year. So it's just trying to get this on public record. You know, if you told me we have scholarship awards by Bose Corporation, you know, I didn't believe it. I really didn't believe it when I got the phone call, but it's happening. As you can see, and Erin Hurley, she likes her headphones in college. So I just appreciate everybody that got involved in this. And I know this weekend in November will be a special weekend for Wilmington to have a Navy SEAL at Wilmington High School. So then we'll have Mary ask them to come for the ribbon company ceremony in February.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Okay, and thank you, everybody. Any questions? My phone number's in the book, you can get ahold of me, so. So that's what we're doing. So we're on radio tomorrow, we'll see how that goes at Dennis and Galan.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah. So thanks, everybody. And thanks all the students and teachers, really.
Very nice, thank you. All right, now, we're going to go back, and we'll start at the top on the superintendent's report.
Great. First report I have for you is regarding the high school building project, which now, given where the building is, is at, I think is, people are really starting to talk about it. There's a nice buzz in the community. We've had a couple of phone calls from reporters from some of the local press, just looking for an update. Pleased to report to all folks that the, the project is on schedule and on budget. That's probably people's most important concern. We did have a high school building committee meeting on August twentieth, and actually on August nineteenth, Mrs. Broussard and I were able to tour the building. And then Mrs. Bonish was part of the high school building committee, and we toured the building. And as you can see, the, pretty much the exterior of the building is, is complete. The building envelope is almost tight. There's a few remaining windows left to be installed, mostly in the staircases. All of the systems, HVAC systems, electrical systems are almost completed. The roof work, most of the roof work is done, other than the areas that are covering the rooftop equipment. Site work is progressing. You can see the driveway's starting to take shape, and the sidewalk actually was, the church street sidewalk was returned to the town, so kids were able to use that as they came to school. I'm sure the kids are very excited as well to see the progress. Classrooms are probably progressing most quickly, and I think that was part of the plan. Sheet rock was up, paint is on the wall, the ceiling tile grids, I understand, are dropping in now. And after Labor Day, the casework will start to go in, so it will really start to take shape really quickly after that. We're making plans right now for training staff, custodial and maintenance staff, for training food service staff, and teachers who, you know, use various parts of the building, training them as well. We did receive bids for the FFNE, and that budget, the amount that the bids came in at was about two hundred thou, a little over two hundred, one of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, over what was included in the actual budget from MSBA. But Mr. Rogiro and I, and as well as the architect, and Mrs. Peters, and Mr. Phillips, we went and saw all sorts of samples of different furniture from the various vendors who bid. And just through the selection process, and we were able to knock about, I think it was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars off of that amount, just by picking, instead of picking the aspect highest-priced item, we were able to pick items that were still high-quality, but those vendors' bid prices came in lower. So we probably got a gap right now of about fifty thousand dollars, and we've got some ideas on that. We'll certainly have some conversations with the town manager as well about that, but we're, a lot of work on that. Yep, exactly. And then we're developing transition plans. Actually, Mr. Rogiro and I will be meeting with the high school administration in a couple weeks, and we'll start really nailing down what the transition plans will look like for the move from the current high school to the new high school in February.
All right, anyone have any questions or comments?
I just had a quick question. In putting the bids out, are you looking at one particular vendor, or is it several vendors for different?
Yep, that's a good question. The way that they spec it out, they base the actual specification on a particular product line and vendor. However, we're able to select whoever is able to meet that specification. Doesn't have to be the exact same product or vendor. So in the end, it will actually be a number of vendors. Some chairs we may buy from one vendor, desks might come from another. So we are able to really select to that level of detail and really take advantage of the lowest price to be able to get a good package. We're very mindful when we were going through the process, though, of making sure that if we chose a, one product for the, say, the desk and chair, one product for the chair, that it was the same product line for the desk, so that there was matching. And we were mindful of colors and that sort of thing. So ultimately, the architect picks all the colors, but in terms of the availability of different types of finishes and colors.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, back to school report.
Yes, we had a very exciting back-to-school, exciting, good exciting, no, nothing unexpected exciting. Just to talk a little bit about what's happened, even going back to, before we went back to school, we've actually hired over thirty new employees over the course of the summer, so it's clearly been a busy summer, including three new administrators, the interim middle school principal, Mr. Ralph Olson, the assistant principal at the middle school, Mr. Dan O'Brien, and Charlotte Phillips, who is the new director of the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. We talked a little bit about the high school construction, the North Intermediate School, there's a lot of work that's happening there. The classroom windows are all in now. There's some additional vinyl insulation going on over the next few weeks. The doors, unfortunately, I think were delayed until, actually, they're on-site today, and we've got some, supposedly some hardware, and the rest of the doors coming tomorrow. You'll see a lot of work happening probably this weekend, and over subsequent weekends to finish up the work at the window project and door project at the North. So the custodial and maintenance staff were very, very busy over the course of the summer. They did their usual summer cleaning and maintenance activities, but they also had a lot of special projects, like painting and some conversion from oil to gas, as well as some boiler replacement work. So just wanna say thank you to George Hooper and all of his staff in the Public Buildings Department for their hard work this summer. We had over a hundred staff participate in professional development, and you've seen some details in Dr. Burnham's Professional Development Report from the Summer PD. And, you know, have done a lot of work with administrators over the course of the summer. We had twenty-three new teachers in our new teacher orientation program. And as you know, we had opening day with staff on the twenty-fifth. Kids came back on the twenty-sixth. Over the last two days, we've had the opportunity to tour the schools and greet the staff and the students. Staff are all very excited to get back with kids. Kids also are very excited, although they may report otherwise, but they were very, very engaged and really happy to be back. It was a little warm, certainly, in those, it seems like that always happens the first couple of days of school, it's a little warm, but people have been very flexible. In terms of the buses, everything appears to be running very smoothly. There's always sort of that process of making sure you're fine-tuning routes, and that will happen over the next couple weeks, balancing the numbers on the different buses and adjusting schedules accordingly. Just, you know, thanks to Mr. Rogiro for all the work with the town to make sure the buildings are ready and to get the transportation logistics all nailed down, so. And also thanks to Dr. Burnham for all her work with professional development over these last couple months.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Quick question, Pam. On the North, is there any work at all being done during the school, during school hours?
Right now, there is not. We're there, working on second shift, so they're coming at three o'clock and working into the evening to be able to continue the progress and complete the work. So at this point, we've not authorized them to be on-site working when kids are in school.
Good, all right, thank you.
What happened to the CARES department? Isn't there usually a CARES department at the North?
Yeah, the CARES program is-
Yeah, the-
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, the CARES program is running. We've been in constant communication with Gino in the area, and when they're working after hours from three to six or seven, we make sure that the Gino's, the students aren't in the middle of the work that's going on. So they use different entrances, exits, on the playground and stuff like that. So it's worked out well so far for the first few days, anyway.
Yeah, I apologize, I had forgotten about that.
Sure. I got so nervous when I saw those windows, like, first of August, go in, at the North. I was like, what? What are they doing? Why are they doing that now? Like, but they were all back together, and stuff. I was very relieved. But it was kinda nerve-wracking. I was like, oh, school's gonna be set in soon.
Yeah, I think we shared your anxiety.
Yeah, 'cause I drive by there a lot, and I was like, what?
Yeah, there were quite a few parents who spoke to me about it.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I mean, but they look great, so it's well worth it.
They said it would be done, it will be done.
Yes, they definitely were down to the wire. It was unfortunate about the delay in the doors, but at least the windows were all in, and the teachers all are very excited to have wonderful, shiny new windows.
You all set? Okay. Oh, Mr. Rogiro.
One quick comment on the busing. Sharon Donat, who's the transportation coordinator, has been doing yeoman's work in that area. It's never easy to set routes up that everyone's happy with at all times. And I think the phone's ringing off the hook, and she's been dealing with all those issues. So it's really through her efforts that so far, things seem to be going pretty well.
Good, oh, thank you. Okay, summer professional development report.
Yes, the next four items, a summer professional development report, professional development handbook, summer PD report, just gives you a flavor for actually details, all the different things that happened over the course of the summer. And the PD handbook is something that I think you see each year, which just outlines how the process works here in Wilmington Public Schools. The D cap, District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, and the ELL Program Plan are documents I think you receive each year as well. So if you have any specific questions on that, I'm happy to take those. Dr. Burnham pulled together all these reports, so she can certainly help with any clarifying questions you might have. Mrs. Burns.
In looking at the curriculum renewal cycle, and I thank you very much for your responses to my questions, like I know it was daunting, and, and I don't always like that, just to, not to get you nervous. But I noticed that over the past two years, we've followed a particular renewal timeline. And in looking at what's being proposed, and I thank you again for the explanation, I, just to reiterate, I had inquired why some of the subjects of study that for the past couple of years have been on target for this year, and then the fifteen-year, fifteen, sixteen, and on, have been altered and adjusted, and in some, and please correct me, some facts just taken away. And the response we got back was that it's a suggested revision based on the curriculum needs being impacted by the content, revisions for content standards by the state and district curriculum delivery models, which I can absolutely understand with the ever-changing that's going on. But I think what my concern, where my concerns are, is that I know that-
Excuse me one second, Mrs. Burns. Could I just tell everybody?
Please.
It's in this packet, in the last three pages of it, if that, if you don't know, that's what she's referring to.
Professional handbook, I'm sorry. My concerns are, I know that this year, English six through twelve, and then health and PE curriculum was coming up. And my concern is that, and perhaps this is just maybe an opinion, that I think that, as well as Fine and Performing Arts, which was initially scheduled for next year's school year, to come up, do not get, keep getting bumped away, because I think in light of the new law that, which is under the gun violence bill that Governor Patrick did sign, which goes into effect January first, with regards to suicide prevention and the other mental health pieces and aspects of health, and then phys ed, we've been mandated with the BMI piece, which, you know, I think, and then with the CPR, and all these new improvements we're doing, I think it would bode to look at this curriculum, and how can we expand upon it to the needs and changes of society. That's my concern, as well as, again, the Fine and Performing Arts, because it's besides another outlet for students to learn and benefit. It's, it's also a tool for some of those students to kind of be able to access the other aspects of the curriculum that we received. So I would just like to maybe throw my hat in the ring and just say that I would, I would very much appreciate it if, in looking forth, not to wait too long to address those areas of curriculum as well.
And if I could just address that concern?
Sure.
As different elements, such as suicide profession, prevention PD that our staff have participated in, as those elements come up, yes, they are addressed in the curriculum. In terms of this particular cycle, this is a big-picture overview and examination of the curriculum as a whole. It's not that, you know, when things pop up, if, if we aren't in cycle, we can't add those things. We certainly can.
Right.
But the, the problem is, is that we've had so many external driving factors for overhaul of curriculum with the, you know, the incoming of Common Core, et cetera, that it really did put a stress on, and to some degree, put our planning, as documented, out of sync a bit. So we're trying to take a step back, go slow to go fast, as the new superintendent has often said, to take a good look at what we're doing, what needs to be done, based on feedback that's coming from staff, from curriculum directors, from principals. You know, there's a lot of curriculum work that has to be done, and we really just need to reevaluate and, and resync the schedule that's documented to kind of support the cycle that actually needs to be implemented.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Okay. So, so basically, because as far as I'm familiar with and was aware that our curriculum was matched to Common Core, you basically, you'd like to take this year, just so I understand it right, this year to just go over what was developed and to fine-tune it? Is that, is that, just let me know if I'm on the right-
It depends. I mean, if we're talking about the elementary-level ELA curriculum- I mean, if we're talking about the elementary level ELA curriculum, for example, it's really complex with the new Common Core. We really need to reexamine what we're doing in terms of, let's say, in particular, a writing curriculum. The program that we've been using for a number of years, the Houghton Mifflin, has a writing element, but it is not, it is not substantial enough, it's not rigorous enough for the new Common Core. So, that means a lot of additional work is going to be developed through teacher teams, and that work really does need to be done.
Okay.
And that, again, is feedback that's coming from staff.
Okay.
And principals.
Okay, so, the other question I had then pertains to the science piece. Now, as we were told about this time last year, FOS, it was being implemented last year in grades, I believe, six through twelve?
No.
No?
Kindergarten, third grade, and fifth grade.
Okay. And then this year, it was going to roll out to the other grades?
True.
Okay, so, granted with the science piece, I, BOE gets their handle as to what they're going to approve for standards, are we still on target for that? Or have we, again, postponed, just so that we can look back at those, the first rollout, to make sure, I mean, where's that?
Sitting here right now, I would say that we are on target for that, but I would like to just clarify that the FOS kits that we proceeded with for grades K three and five, and that we will roll out for the remaining elementary grades, that's one unit of study. One unit. It's not an entire grade-level curriculum, it's one unit. And that one unit will, we are very hopeful, align with the new standards once they are adopted. We're still waiting. That's supposed to be, that vote is supposed to be happening this fall. So, we will know for sure, and we'll know for sure at that point, the timeline that districts will have to align and develop curriculum to be compliant with the new standards. We anticipate that that timeline will be a handful of years. But, yes, the FOS kits, we did a lot of groundwork on that, to be sure that the kits that we were moving forward with not only supported the current standards, but would likely also be aligned with the incoming standards when they are adopted.
Can I ask you, well, the science standards were never approved, even under MCAS, from what I understand.
No, we have current state standards for science.
Under frameworks? Okay.
They aren't part of Common Core, that's an entirely different thing.
No, 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 right.
But, we do have state frameworks for, for science.
Science standards, okay. FOS is not, there's not components of FOS in the higher-level grades, like middle school, high school?
No, we're looking at this only for elementary.
Okay, alright. Very good.
Do I have any other questions? I think I'm seeing a little bit, understanding what MJ is saying. I guess when we approved this, when it first came out years ago, so, I guess what I would think it would be easier for us, if there's going to be major changes in something, we've already discussed as a board, perhaps it would be easier for us if we say that we're going to look at, we're looking at this, we just want you to know we're looking at this, so that we can kind of have our minds, and this is the reason we're doing it, or just let us know that.
Yeah, and this is not a finalized draft. Unfortunately, the copy that you have doesn't have the notation at the bottom, that these are suggested revisions. This particular document will be brought to the Elementary Curriculum Cabinet and the Secondary Curriculum Cabinet, when they have their first meetings in September, for their input on this recommended new sequence. At that point, if they agree, that's great, then this will reemerge. You'll see this in the Professional Development Plan document, that normally comes forward at this time as well, every year. If they have suggested edits to this sequence, we'll have some conversation about that at that time, and then, when we're ready to bring back the PD plan, there'll be a more comprehensive explanation of the revisions and the rationale for the changes that are recommended as part of the PD plan coming forward.
I'm looking at this, has Fine and Performing Arts ever been looked at?
Yes.
That's what I thought. We're getting into...
They just finished a cycle, as a matter of fact, yeah.
See, that's what we're, we don't, we're not aware of, I mean, I knew that was happening, I thought that had been happening, so, maybe at some point, we could get just a list of which ones have already been gone through, and then it'll be the next one. And, could I ask, do we, we don't do special ed as a separate entity?
No.
Have we done, no? Because that has been on here.
Because it's not a special education curriculum.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's our district curriculum.
All right, thank you.
Special, but in some cases, what, it should be district, and in some cases, special education is just being able to modify.
Correct.
The curriculum, right?
But, the modifications come on a case-by-case basis, based on student needs.
Okay, alright.
Anyone else, anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Burnham.
Thank you, Dr. Burnham. Thank you for your time. This last item on my agenda of the superintendent's report, is just a memo that outlines the schedule for the upcoming food allergy assemblies that are going to be occurring across the district, from Monday, September twenty-second through Thursday, September twenty-fifth. You see the times there. So, if you're interested in attending that, you want to let me know, make sure to pass that information along. There's also a flyer here, the person who's actually providing the workshop provided us with a flyer on that. And I also attached, just for your benefit, to the food allergy administrative guidelines that were developed by Doreen Crowe and her staff, as a result of discussions that I think took place last year around food allergies and other life-threatening allergies.
I'm definitely going to make that, and I hope if anyone can make it, it would be important, because it is a, it's a learning piece for us to, and I really want to know what we're being taught. I think the school community needs to be aware of, you know, what's being brought in in that program. So, I had asked Mrs. Delai to let us know, so, I'm sure some of us will be definitely going there.
Should we let you know if we plan on going to one of these, so you can...
Then I can just, yeah, cool, yeah, just let the, certainly let the administrator in the building know. So, I will say that kids in the elementary schools, they are very tuned into this. They, I went today, and a couple classrooms I hit during snack time, and they would not share, because they've been told, you can't share snacks. They wouldn't even share with the superintendent.
Oh. That's excellent, excellent. Could I just ask one? We did have another report in here about the English Language Learners...
Oh, yes, yep.
Program Plan. I know we do not have a lot of English Language Learners, but is it still, a few years ago, they made it a requirement that all teachers had to get thirty-six hours, it was something pie in the sky, and I think that has changed. But, do all teachers now still have to get so many hours?
They're going to have to attain an SEI endorsement for their license.
Oh, so not the ones who are already there? It's like a grandfathered group?
No.
Oh, no, okay.
Unless you hold a state certificate to teach as an ESL instructor...
Right.
...all other educators are going to have to attain the endorsement. And you do that by taking a course, which could be a full course, a three-graduate credit course. Teachers who have had some training and background, and the state has set up criteria for all of these things, can take bridge courses. There are abbreviated courses for people that have had training in the past. And the state has just moved forward with a new MTEL test, so that teachers can take the test to attain the SEI endorsement.
Now, would it be our responsibility to pay for the teachers to take these things?
No.
Oh, this is incredible.
It's a requirement now of licensure.
These things make me so angry.
In order for a teacher to be able to renew their licensure, they have to have that.
To renew their license.
Yeah, so it's a, that's how the, you know, that's how the state decided it was going to comply with this mandate, if you will, which resulted from some, the Department of Justice civil rights type issue around this. So, yeah, this is, and in addition to teachers, administrators who supervise those teachers also have to obtain the SEI endorsement.
Would we ever be able to give a course through Wilmington University?
No, not right now.
No, okay.
And again, it's, we explored that as an option. Unfortunately, the instructors have to be, it's not like a state certification, but they have to go through a training at the Department of Ed, they have to meet a whole bunch of criteria, in order to be an approved instructor for the SEI courses.
That's what I heard, and there aren't a lot of them, correct.
And there aren't enough of them, so we cannot compete for their time.
Hmm.
So, until the state moves through their three-year timeline, where all districts have a certain number of educators, that we are required to move forward for the training, until that window passes, we really cannot even pay for an instructor to come in and provide this course to all of our teachers.
Wow.
We tried.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
Correct me, I thought we sent, I know we have two CTLs?
TLL teachers.
Teachers in district?
Yeah.
I had thought that we had sent them to be certified to teach that, in order to roll it out to some of our teachers. What, maybe you can refresh my memory exactly?
No, they're both, they're both licensed to teach children, ELL children, English Language Learners. Our, one of our teachers, who's also now the CTL for ELL, she has just recently gone through all the training and been approved to be an instructor for the state, for this course.
Oh, okay.
She's also just completed some training to be an instructor for the administrator's version of the course, so, we're hoping that she'll be able to provide an administration-level course here in the spring. What, there aren't limitations on right now, and what we're planning, in anticipation that next year will be the last of the three years that we have to send teachers free of charge to complete the endorsement courses, that we'll be able to provide a workshop, probably more like a series of workshops, to prepare educators to take the SEI MTEL test, so that they can get the endorsement by taking the test and passing the test. So, we do have somebody in district that I'm working with to develop that prep course, if you will, so that we can provide that much for our teachers. Right now, there's no conflict there, so we can, we can move forward with that. We just can't move forward with bringing somebody in to provide the full course right now, because the, the number of, yeah, the state said no.
Very extremely prescriptive about what, even to the time of when you can actually, the time you can actually offer the course to teachers, and the time you can't offer the course to teachers.
And they do have people from the Department of Justice who do pop into these classes to monitor fidelity to the course that's been designed.
Wow.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. I'm confused as to what the difference is between ELL and ESL.
There really isn't a whole lot of difference. The state still refers to English second language teaching as ESL, but the students are referred to as English Language Learners.
So, there is no difference. That's why I'm confused.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is amazing. Okay. Let me see. Oh, old business?
Yes, I included in your package is a updated version of the calendar. I know you vote, have already voted the calendar for 2014-15, and this is not something that requires your vote, when you're voting, you're voting to set the actual, I think, start date in the one-hundred-and-eighty-one days. But, there was a request from Mrs. Peters to change the High School Parent Conference evening date from November twentieth to November thirteenth, so we have done that in the calendar. And the reason for the change is that the November twentieth date conflicted with a Performing Arts performance.
Oh, okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure you have updated version of that.
Thank you. New business. We had our new business originally, but we have one more piece.
And, this is as a result of special, the legislation that was passed, which was probably two years ago now, around special education collaboratives, and it mandated that collaborative board members be appointed annually by the school committee. We are a member of the SEAM Collaborative, and the meetings will start up in, actually, October, so, what this board needs to do is to take a vote to appoint me as the representative to the SEAM Board of Directors.
Alright, Mrs. Burns.
I make a motion to appoint Mary Delai as Representative Wilmington to the Board of SEAM Collaborative.
For the, yeah, 2014-15.
2014, 2015, school year.
Good to see you, Mr. Burns. All those in favor? Your name, Miss Linda? Thank you. Wow, here we go. Public comment? Any comments? No? No public tonight? Okay. Well, someone's on here, did we lose it?
It's on the next page.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Before we do that, though, other reports. I'm trying to think, I think, MJ, you should do your other report now, under other reports.
Of course, okay. Did you, can I ask if, I gave Julie the correspondence piece, which I think would...
Oh, so you want to do it under correspondence?
If you don't mind, and then we, and if we can...
Right, that's next, so...
We have the next page, we have, yeah, the car...
Yeah, correspondence, so we'll do that.
I just think it would make more...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We have two pieces of correspondence. First of all, for those of us that are not aware, the Boutwell Parent Advisory Committee had requested a bench placed at the Boutwell Playground in honor of Mr. Appeloni, who has recently retired, and they went through the process of reaching out to Jeff Hull to see how we would go about that, and they were able to get that accomplished. And we also have a nice thank-you letter from Mary Delai, thanking them, the Boutwell PAC, for their generous donation of a bench at the Boutwell Playground to honor Mr. Appeloni. That's kind of sweet. And then, we have a letter from John Tierney in response to Mrs. Burns' letter over the summer, and his response is, "Thank you for sending me a copy of your letter to Senator Warren and for your service as the legislative representative on the Wilmington School Committee. I take this opportunity to share my views on the important issues you raised. The recent shooting in Fort Hood, Texas, as well as those in Washington DC, Connecticut, Arizona, Wisconsin, and Aurora, are terrible tragedies, and my deepest sympathies continue to be with all the victims and their families. It is unimaginable that such senseless tragedies continue to occur, and no action has been taken at the federal level to address the many pitfalls of our current methods of reducing gun violence. I contend that common sense regulations of firearms, ammunition, and the potential users of them should be adopted in this country, as it has in so many others. With all due respect to those who communicated in opposition to any action, I do not believe that such reasonable measures need be inconsistent with any person's constitutional rights. I believe we should agree on common sense measures that promote safety efforts, designed to keep guns out of the hands of unsupervised children, dangerous criminals, and those who are mentally unstable and distinguish between weapons clearly intended for rapid-fire mass destruction, and those used by responsible hunters or sports shooters. In that vein, I am currently a co-sponsor of several measures before the House of Representatives and the Hundred and Thirteenth Congress that are aimed at addressing gun violence in a comprehensive manner. Some such legislation would strengthen background checks, institute a ban on high-capacity ammunition, increase access and ability to conduct research on gun violence, crack down on gun trafficking, and ban assault weapons. Additionally, I recently introduced legislation, the Personalized Handgun Safety Act, that would require all newly manufactured handguns to be equipped with personalization technology, allowing only the authorized users of that gun to fire the gun. This technology would protect law enforcement officers from having their guns used against them, would protect gun owners whose guns are stolen from the, from the risk their gun might be used in a crime or suicide attempt by others, and would protect children and teenagers whose lives are taken accidentally." them, would protect gun owners whose guns are stolen from the, from the risk their gun might be used in a crime or suicide attempt by others, and would protect children and teenagers whose lives are taken accidentally. No one believes that all incidents can be stopped through such legislation, but many rightfully believe that many potential incidents can be avoided, and the severity of any that may be attempted can be curtailed. I continue to stand firm in my commitment to make our neighborhoods and our schools safer from violence. I look forward to seeing you all in the district soon. Be well. Sincerely, John Tierney, Member of Commerce."
Thank you.
From that letter, I have to say, and it's been about a month since I've received it, and in looking back and rereading the letter that I initially wrote, I have to say, I do appreciate Congressman Tierney to take the time to respond to the letter that I had sent to Senator Warren in response. But in a way, I'm a little, I don't know, I felt irritated, maybe that's not the best term, to use with regards to that, I think you can't have one conversation without the other, with school violence and the impact that we're seeing on, in public schools and college campuses. And to make it about guns, it's not. I mean, as we know, you know, teacher Colleen Ritzer was slashed with a knife and killed. And it's those type of violences, and even here in Wilmington, we've had a couple of bomb threats last year that, you know, thankfully were, fortunately were nothing, nothing, or threats, I should say. I don't think that, I can't remember, I don't think it was bomb, but threats, I should say. But I'm just irritated that as a school committee, he's not addressing the animal in the room, which I think, and as the state keeps mandating, especially with the gun violence law that's just been signed into law by Governor Patrick and gets, becomes, becomes active, I think is the word, on January 1st. There's a lot more measures districts are now facing to support the emotional well-being of our students. And I was just irritated by that term, that it, for me, it speaks of guns and his participation in trying to be active on that, that conversation. And personally, I think that conversation is not the main animal in the room, and that more attention and more conversation needs to be created with regards to mental health funding in our communities, as well as in our schools. And, and that's where my, I think, irritable-
Frustration.
Yes, thank you, comes. And so I had spoken to Peg and Mary with regards to maybe formulating a response to that letter, whether it will help or hinder. I think I would welcome anyone's perspective of that piece. But I just, as a congressman at the federal level, I think it's not guns that kill people, it's people who kill people. And how are you going to narrow down the mentally ill from those who aren't mentally ill, who are able to get their hands on weapons? Because I don't think it's, it's all about guns. You know, I think there's a, kids, you know, kids are using a variety of different, variety of different aspects, so, but it's violence, and it threatens the education of each and every child. And that's where I think irritated me, that he didn't address the public school piece in that realm of violence. And that's where I stand in. So I did write a response, granted, it's in a rough draft, I'm just not quite happy with it, but I think I would be interested in, A, your thoughts as to whether or not rebuttal would be something that we as a board would support, or if I should just let it go, or formulate a response to it, to say, you're off point, you know? I think he avoided the animal in the room. Mental health is not an easily discussed topic, so.
Mr. Burns?
I think part of the reason was, when you wrote the letter, it was, even though your efforts were towards mental health, it was during the time that all these tragedies happened that were gun-related. And this is a huge political hot potato that, no. So, I think that, where you talk about the ambush happened after you wrote the letter, so I don't know if that was, or-
No. I wrote, I recently wrote a letter in June to Senator Warren after the Colorado shootings, and Colleen Ritzer's death happened, was it last fall, or was it last fall?
Was it, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I think the issue has become now going back and forth about gun control, and I don't know if we want to go down that route as a, as a school committee. And then today, we, we hear about this tragedy about a nine-year-old at a shooting range, killing someone, which is awful. So I think we have to be very careful when, when, you know, we, if we want to talk about mental health, just be very specific about why we need mental health, funding, and everything else, especially if we start talking or sending letters to members of Congress, because they're going, it's going to be black and white to these guys, and they're going to go onto the side that becomes a political agenda for them. So however, we, I agree with you that we should do something, we just need to be very careful-
I agree.
-how we word it, because it then becomes a gun issue that we want no part of that.
Exactly, and that's, and that's my perspective. I don't want, I don't want a part of that gun aspect. And I, I don't, and I don't think, I certainly don't think it's an, as you said, an argument to enter, because it's all politics. But I, and that's kind of where I'm looking for some direction.
We gave, she, yeah, sorry. Mrs. Burns gave out a letter, possible response. So what I was thinking was, we could keep it for the two weeks and look it over, and then finish this discussion on the 10th, as to, do you want it to be sent from the committee? And do you want to add anything or subtract anything from that letter, as it stands?
I think, I do agree, I think that there's two pieces to that, whether or not you feel it's worth that, because I, that's not, certainly, it's, Tierney wasn't the only one to have that impression. It's, it's difficult, because you can't have one without the other, because the majority of the violence that we've seen in schools have been from weapons, guns, and so, and that's, and that's, I think, personally speaking, I'm tired of the gun conversation in that sense, and I think more needs to be addressed as to what the real animal, shootings are a reaction to, a majority of the time, to a real mental health piece of the individual's doing it. And, and that's what I was just trying to convey, and in trying to convey that to our federal representatives, to, for what it's worth, I suppose.
No, and I agree with you, with the effort, it's just heading down a path that we probably don't want to be heading down.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree with you more, and that's why I'm-
I don't think we want to get to gun control at all. All right, so does that sound satisfactory? We'll look it over and see how you feel the next time? All right.
Thank you.
Before we do future meeting dates, I just wanted to mention that there are some policies that are coming up that, so if we can get the policy committee started again, that would be great. So that means we have the policy committee and the superintendent's evaluation committee that we'll bring up. And if anyone feels, after the summer, that we have, we're all assigned to committees, subcommittees on the list, next week, next, in two weeks when we talk about it, we can go back through the list, and if you want to change committees, or, you know, you find you can't, don't have the time, or you'd like to switch on to something else, we'll talk about that, okay? So we can do basically the subcommittees in two weeks. Okay. And our next two meetings will be September 10th and September 24th. We all set? Thank you. Thank you for a very good first meeting for Mr. Delai, I think. We're getting on track, and we have a focus, and off we'll go. So, thank you, everyone, have a good two weeks, and we'll see you on September 10th. I need a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Carroll?
Don't move.
Second, Mrs. Burasad. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Linda.